Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Hi. Could we please call the meeting to order? Thank you. This is Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, and it is 7:01. And we would like to welcome everybody for a great turnout tonight. We accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Move to accept as printed.
Second.
Motion to accept as printed. Department heads, we have Chief Janus with us this evening for some appointments. Chief?
Good evening, everybody. We have some promotions here tonight due to the retirement of Deputy Chief Dennis Murphy after 49 years of service to the town of Rainham. First, I'd like to call up Captain Fire Inspector Brian LaCivita to Deputy Fire Chief Fire Inspector. Brian started with the fire department in November 1993 as a call man, became permanent in July of 1995, promoted to lieutenant in September of 2008, promoted to captain fire inspector January 2012. As of August 1st, Brian has been promoted to deputy fire chief fire inspector. Will Brian and Kim please come up? And if I could have if I could have town clerk Marshall Lounsbury square him in, please.
Will you raise your hand? Do you sort of want to be Deputy Chief Fire Inspector of the town? You're duly sworn in.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to say thank you. It's a great honor and a humbling honor, especially to see all these people out here and my family. I look forward to leading this department with the chief. Progress forward and keep on moving. We have a lot of talent out there and I look forward to being part of that and leading them.
We'll get a picture after. With the captain's position open, I've promoted Lieutenant Barrett Johnson to captain. Barrett started on the Rainham Fire Department July of 1995 as a call man, became permanent July of 1998, promoted to lieutenant December of 2011. And as of August 20th, Barrett has been promoted to captain. Will Barrett and Danielle please come up? Can the three children?
Do you sort of want to be Deputy Captain of the Rainham Fire Department? Would you like to give a thank you?
I do.
Good. You got anything to say?
I just want to thank my family, the town, the chief. Couple of guys watching this show, saw some of me. I very appreciate it.
Now, this guy with the Barrett's promotion. I promoted Acting Lieutenant Jeffrey Keller to the rank of permanent lieutenant. Jeffrey started on the Rainham Fire Department July of 1995 as a call man, became permanent in 1998. January of this year, Jeff had been acting lieutenant while Lieutenant Johnson was out injured. As of August 1st, 2017, Jeff has been promoted to lieutenant. Will Jeff and Kelly please come up? I just want to add one more thing. Justin was put on the call department, which is Lieutenant Keller's son, on July 1st, too. So, another Keller.
I'd just like to thank you, chief. I know you had many qualified people that applied for this job and I appreciate you having some faith in me to move us forward. I'm really looking forward to getting things going here, moving forward for the future. I really appreciate it. Rainham Fire has been a great fit for me and it's been a blessing. It started 25 years ago and my life is significantly different because of it. I appreciate it. I would additionally like to just thank a few more people. You mentioned the trial period that I had as acting officer. I don't think it was any secret that we were getting older as an organization and we were going to have some movement. So during that trial period as acting officer, my shift in particular, but anybody that worked on my shift, we were short shifted a lot with a very young group and they really hustled and I want to thank you personally, but I want to thank you publicly. I don't know where you all are, but anybody under me, and that actually goes the other way. If I had to make a phone call to go up, I also got the help, so I appreciate it. I felt like they wanted me to succeed. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to call up Sean Carter. Sean graduated from the fire academy in April 28th of 2017. Sean started out as a call man in August of 2014 and has been on the department as a permanent firefighter since June of 2016. He's been a great asset to our department. Okay. I guess it's
I do.
You're duly sworn in. Congratulations.
I'll turn it over to Chairman Stunger.
I have a bunch of stuff. First of all, I want to congratulate all of you because you are, you're all just wonderful, wonderful men. And you do it from your service to the town. You want to do it in your own way. You're really, really great.
Congratulations on your appointments, on your new positions. I'm sure the chief had a difficult time filling them, but as usual, chief, you did a great, great job. I want to also thank all the families because, you know, none of you guys do any of this alone. You have families and they are right behind you 100% all the time. So I want to say thank you to all of the families who support the firefighters, who support the town of Rainham, especially, I saw coming in David Pillsbury. Now, David is no longer a firefighter, but you see how close knit you guys are? He's right here. Thank you, David, for coming in and supporting your former men and all your best friends. Thank you all.
Dennis, you continue to leave a mark on the department. I've never seen one retirement result in all this. I've said it before, but I'll say it again. I want to, while everybody's here, congratulate Dennis on his years of service for the town as well. We've had a few opportunities to do it, but Dennis's career was one that I think anybody would strive to want to emulate and so again, just publicly thank you, Dennis, for your service to the town. And I also want to congratulate all three of the promotions. I want to tell a quick story about my good buddy Barrett, though. Barrett, about a year ago, got injured at a call and Chief Janus called me and said, you know, Barrett got really injured, really bad, not sure what's going to happen. There was some talk for a while about whether Barrett was even going to be able to return to work or not. And when Jim called me, he's like, you know, if you have the time, maybe stop by and see him. He's home, so I went by to see him and Barrett had no clue what was going on. But Barrett's the type of guy that a couple of days later, he called me and he said, you know, Joe, I know you came to my house. I don't remember what I said to you, but I want to apologize. That's true. And I said, Barrett, I said, you have nothing to apologize for, but I talk about this story because some people would have taken that as an opportunity to retire early and go to the beach every day. And Barrett fought back from a real bad injury to come back and I think that speaks volume, not just for him, but of the whole department and a culture that Chief Andrews and now Chief Janus has created. It's a good culture, a strong culture. We have what I call a waitlist with the call department of people who want to join full time and that doesn't happen by accident. That happens through thoughtful planning and consideration and putting people like these guys in positions to help lead the department. So congratulations to all of you and best of luck. And Barrett, don't fall through stairs again. Thank you.
I'll keep it short and sweet. I just want to say thank you very much for all your support to the town and congratulations on your very well deserved promotions. I'm sure you guys are going to do amazing. I've known a lot of you for a lot of years and I have a little funny story about Brian. Who would have thought? I was babysitting you at 13 and you were like five or six and we would turn out like this. How funny is that? Congratulations. Do a great job and stay safe. Everybody stay safe. Congratulations again. Did you want to have pictures?
Yes, please, if we could.
Yep.
Nice. You all look great.
These guys clean up pretty good, huh?
Thank you very much. May be you on set.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the best babies.
So funny, huh?
How's Amanda?
Good. She has two, two babies, a two-year-old and a one-year-old. Yep. Okay. We're going to continue with the meeting. Hopefully, everybody can hear us. We have no other appointments this evening. We do have a public hearing. We'd like to call the hearing to order for transferring the China Garden license to the Rainham Tavern. Is there anyone here? Yeah, he might be. You're doing good.
Hi. Could you state your name?
My name is Ed Brennan. I'm an attorney with an office at One Church Green in Taunton and I represent the applicant tonight. As the board is aware, we're asking that the license, all liquor license be transferred from one location on Broadway to another. The proposal is to build a function hall and a tavern at 38 Broadway and move from 883, which is the China Garden. The license is for all alcohol and it's a very simple proposal. We're asking you to qualify Mr. Sullivan and his new entity, Rainham Tavern, qualify them as a proper recipient of the license. I think you're all familiar with Mr. Sullivan from his present operation at the Jockey Club. So we propose that the license be transferred. The banquet hall, banquet facility would be constructed first. That would be a 200-feet facility. It would include about 4,000 square feet between the kitchen area and the seating area and then the tavern would be developed off of that at a future date. But the goal is to get the function hall up and running first and then the tavern.
Make any comments on this? No? And how does the board wish to move forward? Yes.
I really have no questions. I'm familiar with the situation.
Okay.
No issues. I would motion to approve as requested.
Second. It has been approved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good night.
New business. We have a few people in the audience regarding, it looks like, the North School Committee and the NOAA Adoption Agency. Would anybody like to come up and speak on behalf? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much. Does anybody else want to come up and say anything? Okay. Could you just state your name?
My name is Riley.
And where do you live? Sorry. And your address? Sorry.
I live on 172 Dean and Taunton.
Okay.
So I'm a certified animal control officer in the state of Massachusetts. I also run a nonprofit similar to Linda. That's how we initially met. And I was here because I read in the article and heard from her about what's been going on with the location at the North School. And it just raised quite a few concerns because I think I come from a different perspective than a lot of other people because I've done the ACO thing and I've done the nonprofit thing. And I guess my concern is that if they don't have a space to function out of as an adoption center, it greatly reduces the number of animals they're able to take in. And I know that your protocol for dogs is to send them to the Lakeville Shelter, but there's nowhere for cats to go. And in towns that have not had any cat control or management in terms of feral colonies as well as owned cats, it gets out of control very quickly and becomes a public health concern as well as just a general nuisance to have that many animals running around. And I know I live right on the Taunton-Rainham line and in my condo complex alone, we have about 25 feral cats. And I've tried to get it under control myself, but having an organization like NOAA at our disposal is a great asset. It also alleviates a lot of the financial burden on the town because that would fall on the town if animal control was having to pick up cats and instead of holding them and adopting them out, just having them euthanized. I know in your bylaw, it states that the town can get charged up to $100 per animal and if you look at her numbers alone in just the animals she's taken in, I think in the last three years, it's about 600. And that's $60,000 of taxpayers' money that I feel like could probably be used in a better way than to essentially euthanize cats. And it also, I think, would be a lot cheaper in the long run just to better fortify a space within the North School for what you would like to use it for. I believe it's document storage. I think it would probably be easier just to improve the security there. I understand it's a security conflict with having people in the building, but I think in the long run, it just is more fiscally responsible to keep them there and allow them to serve the town at no cost to you. Because if you look at the surrounding towns with even lower populations, the animal control budget is between $200,000 and $300,000. So I think 60 in the damages that would happen with all of the cats that are here is pretty small in comparison to what the other towns spend. That's my spiel. Thank you.
Hi. Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name's Linda Brackett. It's 26 Hidden Valley Drive in Rainham. I'm with Nomaskin North in the Animal Haven and I don't know if, does anyone have questions or would you like me to make a statement?
Yeah. Why don't you just make a statement first and then, yeah, if the board wants anything to say, they can ask you. Thank you.
First, I want to thank everybody that's here to support us. We're a non-volunteer nonprofit. Years ago, we could do adoptions in like Pet Supplies Plus or Pet Smart or Pet Co or anywhere like that. In February of 2015, the Department of Agriculture came out with a derivative stating that no rescue can do adoptions in any business that has anything to do with animals. Even like a tractor supply where there are no animals, you can't go in there and do adoptions. In the derivative, it says you can do adoptions in a shoe store or a bakery. I mean, it was just, it was really, really a crazy thing. So what that did to us is that limited what we could do. We couldn't take in animals. If we can't place them, we can't take them in. So that stopped us from placing cats or kittens or whatever else we would want to place. So we had to find a place. For about a month, we tried working out of my garage. Well, that didn't work well. It was pretty much a nightmare. I live on a cul-de-sac and, I mean, we had cars all over the place and sometimes, I mean, we're very picky in who we adopt to and we could turn somebody down and you don't know if they're going to come back and they're going to egg your house or, you know, you don't know what they're going to do. So that, without the North School, we're not going to be able to do adoptions. We would have to close up shop and we would be done. We've placed 600 cats and kittens in the last three years. There's one neighborhood in town, Paddock Drive, that Adam and I, over the last three years, have trapped about 35, taken about, taken about 100 kittens. At least, yeah. Taken 100 kittens out of there. The neighborhood was really upset with this one woman that was feeding. Now everything's fine because there aren't 100 kittens running around the property. You know, we're in the, we're in the building for about two hours a week. People come in, we take in two sets of people at a time. There's always at least five or six volunteers. Somebody meets them at the door. One volunteer, I hand off an application, they walk in, they're with one of our volunteers. They walk over to the cages, they pick out who they want, they go over and they sit at a table, they do their adoption and they come out. Next set of people come in. There are never any more than two sets of people in there at a time. Nobody ever leaves our eyesight. We know exactly where everybody is at all times. So there is no, you know, there's no reason to be concerned about security.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Majri Thery and I now live at 68 Ivy Drive, but I was living at 525 Judson Street. And neighbors had moved and left their cats behind and they were living under the shed next door and they weren't fixed. And we had feral cats everywhere. I called a woman in Norton who gave me Linda's name and number. She came up, the kittens were running all around. We were able to trap them all. This one litter, two litters got by me. And they were taken to the vet, they were fixed and altered, neutered, and they were adopted out. The mother cat was spayed, but she was too feral. She had to be brought back. Judson Street had a terrible problem. The woman up the road was feeding all the feral cats. She must have had 100 cats at one time. They're all gone. They've been adopted out. It's, Linda runs a tight ship and she does a wonderful job for the animals and I don't have any animals right now, but I'll tell you, I love animals.
My name is Nancy Christie. I live at 58 Paddock Road. I'm that woman that fed the feral cats. Okay? My husband started feeding one cat. I never, I don't even know what a feral cat was back then, five years ago. And he started feeding this cat. We fed it for three years and then all of a sudden, it had a little girlfriend. I said, oh, isn't that cute? It's got a little girlfriend. Next thing we noticed, the little girlfriend was pregnant. Then the next thing you know, she had a litter. And at the time, I called, made multiple calls to the animal control officer who, I'm going to come, I'm going to come, I'm busy, I'm going to come next month, I'm going to come next month. I was unaware that cats bred as quickly as they do and multiply as quickly as they do. He showed up one day and one of them was stuck in the storm drain in the street. I'll be back. Actually, it was somebody in the highway department that helped me get the cat out and it just escalated from there. I was afraid to look out my window because every time I looked out, there was another litter of cats and my neighbors had said, just stop feeding them. I'm sorry. I'm Italian. It's what I do. I feed people, I feed, I feed the birds, I feed the squirrels. I'm not going to start feeding these poor cats. So somebody told me about the crazy lady in Rainham, the cat lady, and she is crazy passionate about what she does. She came, she was my stormtrooper. I mean, it was like, oh my God, Linda's here. Did we get anything? Did we catch? She left things to catch them. She was under my deck, she was in the forest, she was in the dark. She came morning, she came noon, she came night. I had 12 cats plus one that was pregnant and ready to have her litter and then another litter of cats that was under the deck and she got every one of those cats. She had them spayed, neutered, had them adopted. I have, for the last six years, I have had six outside. I make them their winter hotel and I make them their summer hotel. I have three of them that let me pat them and brush them and put flea and tick on them or whatever, but they're outside. If it wasn't for Linda, there would be more than 100. If it wasn't for Linda, there would be more than 100 on Paddock Road. I haven't seen any others. I know there was a group that was down the other side, at the end of the street. But she was just, and along with the new animal control officer, who was the Nighting Shining Arm, Adam, and the two of these stormtrooper, and I just can't even tell you. I mean, because I was so stressed not knowing what to do, and they would have just multiplied and multiplied. We can't live without them in this town. Thank you.
My name is Dick Chavo, and I live at 218 Hickory Drive. And thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to say a few words. I have a few notes here that I've picked up over the last few weeks, and a couple of things that I want to comment on. And then I'd like to make a few comments of my own regarding how I feel about this, my position on that is specifically removing NOAA from the Old North School. So there's a couple of points that I've picked up that I know you're aware of, but I just want to put them down to set the stage for my comments. As was mentioned earlier, the group is at the Old North School only once per week. And cats do not reside there overnight. Adoption fees do not cover full costs of medical bills. There's no profit made by anyone from adoption fee. And NOAA, as you know, is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit. The police, I should say, the public do not have access to the building beyond the one room being occupied. And I would say that, I don't know precisely the square footage, but the one room is no more than maybe 300 square feet or 400 square feet out of a building that is more than 6,000 square feet. So we're not talking about a lot of real estate here. So I've heard, one of the comments I've heard is a concern about confidentiality because I know from previous work in the town that, that we do store public records there, and those records are confidential. And the short answer to that issue is lock the doors. We have a lot of confidential information here at Town Hall, and we're able to keep the public in here at all times of the day and night because we lock it up. So if there's confidential material at the Old North School, get a lock and a key. End the discussion, as far as I'm concerned. You know, I've heard that, you know, possibly the town could build its own shelter. But gosh, I mean, you know, we'd need to locate land, we'd need to construct a facility, we'd need, you know, to get staff to maintain it. It just seems like an inordinate amount of cost to get around such an obvious solution to the, to the, to the problem. My recollection going back when the Old North School Building Committee was formed, and I was here when it was formed. It was formed at the approval of the Board of Selectmen. I recall that that was the case, that we approved the committee, and then the committee went on to develop its own membership and so forth. And so I would say that, it's my opinion, that the Board of Selectmen have a lot of sway in how this works out. I do believe that, I'm sure you all can check that, but I do believe that the Old North School Building Committee has some relationship to the board's approval for its existence. So I think the board has something to say here on this issue. You know, so those are a few of the notes that I had, and I had a couple of comments that I would make relative to, you know, NOAA. And I do want to, I do want to reflect on something that Linda touched on, and that is the Animal Control Department, which is budgeted. The Animal Control Department, which is coordinated by Adam Perry, is very much involved with the work that NOAA does. In fact, they're very, they're very co-mingle. They, NOAA is really an extension of the work that we do in the Animal Control Department. The Animal Control Department would be that much more behind the, you know, the effort to do the job if it weren't for NOAA. There's no question about that. As a matter of fact, Linda is actually one of the members of the Rainham Animal Control. You're a backup.
I'm the assistant.
You're the assistant, you're backup. So if Adam is maybe the first responder, but by golly, you're there to support him as well. So, so in some sense, I really think that we could make the case that NOAA is an extension, it's a, it's a part of our total Reinham animal control effort. And I do see that, and with the close association that these two have, and I've worked with Adam in the past, NOAA is an integral part, and I think that we can consider them in a very real way, you know, an extension of our department. And so in that sense, I think that we should give them that consideration. So again, I'm here to support NOAA and Rainham Animal Control, and Linda and Adam. I'm here to support the good work they do, and I'm here to support their continued use of a few hundred square feet at the Old North School. The compassion demonstrated by NOAA's commitment to helping find homes for orphaned, homeless, and yes, helpless cats, is, to say the least, in my opinion, heartwarming. Those who know me know that I, I'm a bit of an animal advocate. Sorry, but that's the way it is. Their concern, humanity, love, and selfless efforts are one of the reasons we are so proud to be a part of Reinham. I feel that very strongly. I have no doubt that some can and will rationalize reasons for removing NOAA from the Old North School. However, I believe the more constructive approach is for all concerned to creatively resolve any issues in order to permit NOAA to continue their good work at the Old North School. I think those issues can be resolved, and we need to approach it with a positive attitude. Incidentally, and this is quite a coincidence, I'm driving home from work tonight, and on the local news, I don't know if some of you have heard this, on the local news, there was a story about a cat. Have you heard this? There's a cat, was it, is either the Sumner Tunnel or the Ted Williams?
The Ted Williams.
Was it the Ted Williams?
Yes.
I knew it was one of the other, so I'm just picking it up. So for those of you who are not familiar with this, this is, to me, is incredible. The cat, there was a cat wandering around, orphaned or whatever, in the Ted Williams Tunnel, and people had called 911, I assume. The state police came out, stopped the traffic to get the cat. Now, I say this, if the Commonwealth of Massachusetts can send out the state police to stop the traffic, can we do any less? I think not. I think not. So that, to me, I just thought that was incredible, hearing that coincidentally. I think maybe that was providential, I don't know. I do, I do. By the way, the excellent article that was in the Reinham Call, and that was August 16th, noted that Ms. Brackett, in the past, has paid $170 in that article, it said, $170 to replace a vandalized window at the Old North School. And I know vandalism is, that's another issue, I get that. But she paid this $170 to replace a window, and I have to tell you, I am really very, very saddened that her not-for-profit budget, which the group operates on a shoestring budget, would, she would pay, she would have to pay for this. Now, I understand that there are those, she never told anybody this, which is, this is typical, isn't it? She never told any, what, talk about selfless. She never told anybody that she had paid for this, and I'm sure if she had, the town would have come up with some way, some means to help her. I just have to believe that. So I'm going to say this, I'm just close by saying this. Aside from that fact, I'm going to use this occasion to ask those who share my feelings to make a donation, no matter how small, no matter how small, to make up for that $170 which could have been used to advance the good work that she and her group does. And to start that initiative, I'm going to donate $25. There you go. God bless you and your work.
Hi, Tracy Rockmeyer, 25 Village Road in Reinham. I actually met Linda about a year ago. We were trying to get a dog park, total other story, I won't bother you on that one tonight. But Linda was gracious to invite us to check out the facility over at NOAA one day when she was doing an adoption. She works a very tight ship over there. She only, she'll make people wait out in the parking lot, she only brings in a very few amount of people in at a time. I've seen the work that she does down there. She keeps the premises extremely clean. If you ask me, in terms of security, she's the one who's, you know, making sure that there's nothing going on down there, and if there is, she will let people know. You know, and the window that she replaced on her own, I mean, she's been down there cleaning up graffiti before. She does that on her own, without, you know, even involving anybody or, you know, getting any taxpayer money involved whatsoever. You know, she really does not take anybody into any other areas in that building. She's confined it all to that one small area, couple hours, you know, every, every Saturday or whenever she does it. I mean, she's very good with security over there. She cares about that building, she cares about the animals. I'm a social media person. If people are posting online about a cat missing, or a cat injured, or coming across a cat, she's on it. In like 10 minutes, she's on it. She'll find that cat, she'll find the owner. If she can't find the owner, she'll find a home for it. So, you know, I do appreciate the, you know, the work that she does, and I do support her as well, to being able to stay in that building. All right? Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Texera, 122 First Street in Reinham. I think it's a noble cause, and I think it's a good thing that what we're doing. But one issue that I think you need to look at, and maybe Dave, you can talk with Bob in the morning, there's no occupancy permit for that building. It's his responsibility and the town's responsibility to make sure when people go into a building, it's safe to occupy it. Now, there may be no problem at all, but those are the rules. I mean, it's, it's not like this is something I'm making up or he's making up. There has to be an occupancy permit, and it doesn't matter if people are in there for one day, for two hours, or a whole week. We don't let people move into homes that are built brand-new until we issue an occupancy permit. We've got a building that I don't know is how old it is, it's been vacant for I don't know how many years. We don't know if it's safe. Somebody's got to look into that. That's a big issue for them. I think it's a great thing, and it's probably a perfect place for it, but you've got to make sure the building is safe before you can just put people in there. That's all I have to say, okay? Have a good day.
Does anybody else have anything they would like to say?
Hi, I'm Adam Perry, 397 Robinson Street. I'm the animal control officer. And as far as, was it John?
Yes.
His comments, I believe that issue has been squared away. The other, the other thing to think about is, we actually, animal control was given this space, not just NOAA. So this space was given to animal control as a department. So, I mean, really, animal control has no, no space. This is our only space that we've ever had. We've worked with minimal funding, you know, we, very small funds, and we're trying our best, and I think we're doing pretty good for what we have, you know? We've got an old beat-up SUV that we make work. We usually end up taking our own vehicles because of things, you know, not in the greatest shape, but we don't complain, we make it work. And I couldn't do it without Linda, she does an incredible job. And that's about it. But I don't think, I think if we, if this isn't an ideal location for us, I think we need to think about another space because, but I think this is perfect, you know? We can, we can co-mingle with documents, I don't think there's an issue with having a space next to them. But that's all I got. But Linda's been doing an amazing job, and I, I couldn't continue to do this without her because, I mean, she does, she does awesome. So, that's it.
Does the permit been issued since the last Wednesday's meeting when we spoke?
Not a hundred percent sure, but I'll...
Well, as of that meeting, if you recall, and some of you people recognized it, we met at that meeting, I asked Bob that question, did you issue an occupancy permit? He said no. So unless something's happening Thursday and Friday, or this morning sometime.
Mr. Texera, do you want to kind of talk about it?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Once again, and I know better, too. I stood there.
Again, John Texera, 122 First Street. I went to your meeting, it was last Wednesday, wasn't it? So unless Bob has issued an occupancy permit on Thursday or Friday, or this morning... There was no, and he, did you know that he did?
I want to clarify that, Mr. Texera.
Sure, if you would.
He did not believe it needed an occupancy. He said if the current state remains intact, which is three or four hours, one day a week, he had no issues with it.
All right, okay. That wasn't the case on Wednesday night?
I spoke to him, and I know Mr. Flaherty has as well, and I don't think we would have invested 50 grand into a building if it wasn't structurally sound.
Well, I understand that, but, but again, we hadn't been putting people in there to this point.
Well, we have been. The North School Committee's been meeting there regularly for a couple of years.
I understand that, I was at that meeting.
There's been regular occupancy there, and like I said, I spoke to the commissioner, he has no concern.
Then I have no issue at all, but from the planning board's point of view, that was an issue we needed to address. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Riley McCabe, 172 Dean and Totten. I just hope that the five of you understand that the arrangement that you have with NOAA and the animal control here is unprecedented. I had a conference call today with ACOs from across the state, as actually, as well as New England, and I brought this up, it wasn't for this, but I brought it up. And I could only find one town in all of Massachusetts that doesn't have a shelter, that has no holding contract for animals, and that does not have a nonprofit working for them. And everyone that I spoke to, I actually, up until about four days ago, was under the impression that you were in a holding contract with NOAA. And it wasn't until Linda told me that she's not getting anything from the town, except for the space donated two hours a week, I was, I mean, kind of mind-blown, because that does not happen anywhere. For a town to have an animal control budget solely salary does not happen anywhere in Massachusetts, at least that I can find, and that was almost 50 animal control officers and their neighboring towns. So I just hope that you understand the value of NOAA and animal control within your town because no one else has what you do. You're really fortunate.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? No? Does anybody on the board have anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, the elephant in the room, whoa. Which would be me, because I'm the only one that has said no. Now, first off, Linda, what you do is wonderful. I told you that. I had the cameras come down to show on television the people that were coming to get the cats. I have no objection to what you do. My objection is this. When the town gave us $100,000 at its meeting, I spoke, and so did others in the audience. And what we said was, we were using that building for storage. Storage. Because the Town Hall was busting out, needing more room, okay? I'm not going back on my word to the town, because they are the legislative body in this town. And I said, "Storage." When storage is done, so is the North School Committee. Then it reverts back to the Board of Selectmen. They choose to put cats in there, donkeys in there, pigs in there. We don't care. But until the storage is done, we don't know how much room we're going to need.
Can I address that?
You can address anything you want.
The meeting in 2015 that was to, and I don't have it with me, it was, because I looked at the, looked at it, was for, to restore and...
Yes.
Repair and restore. Yeah, the article said repair and restore, yes.
The comments that were made was why...
It was asked for.
Okay. But there's nothing, there's no notes there to that effect?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't. But I can bring back the minutes of that meeting and tell you that that's what was said it was going to be for. I didn't get up there and say, "Well, we're going to open up this building for the animal officer, we're going to open up this building for the food bank that John Texera had approached us for," or anything else other than storage. So do you understand where I'm coming from? I don't hate cats.
Not at all.
You don't understand where I'm coming from. All right, how many people in this room go to town meeting? What about the rest of you? Do all live in town?
No. You seem like a very angry woman.
I am not an angry woman. You just, I am frustrated.
The elephant in the room that I see.
I am a frustrated woman.
Why? Why are you so frustrated?
Why am I so frustrated? Because when I say something, and it's my word that I have given out, I, I won't go back on my word.
I have to say, everyone who's spoken tonight has spoken with such compassion, elegance...
For the cats. And I, I have no problem with the cats, I love the cats.
You keep saying that.
If I could just for a second, we have people watching us at home, so if you're talking...
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
No, that's fine, but you just have to go to the...
I don't wanna get up there and attack this lady. It's just, I...
I mean, if I speak loudly or use expression, that doesn't mean I'm angry. I am not an angry person. People in this room, well, you don't all know me, but those who do know me, know I am not. I am a compassionate person. I think what Linda does is a great thing, but not at this time, at that place. When the building is complete, with the storage facility that it was meant to have in it, then by all means, the committee is all done. We don't want any more part of it. The Board of Selectmen take over, and they can do what they want with it. They can put cats in there if they want cats in there.
Or donkeys or pigs. We don't rescue donkeys.
Linda, if you wanna say anything, we just can't, because the people at home can't hear, so. Yep, absolutely.
So, once again, I'm Dick Chavo, 218 Hickory Drive, and, I mean, I understand what Marie is saying, I just think that, and I was on the board at the time that decision was made, so I can speak with a little bit of understanding of what the thinking was, okay? I think that while certainly the board, absolutely, I was there when we made the decision, you know, to store, to store our documents and so forth at the building, but I never thought it was such a literal, such a literal decision, that it automatically precluded other possibilities. All I know is that it was a direction to, you know, I mean, it was clear the direction was to store documents there, so that was a directive. But I certainly, as one of the three people at the time that made that decision, I did not feel that precluded other possibilities, and the reason why I didn't, and don't now, is because there's a lot of space there that's unused, and if we can get more utility out of it, and I think the point earlier by John was well-made, I mean, so long as the building is, you know, is available for occupancy, and as Selectman Pacico has said it is, you know, then we should find other uses for it, that, you know, that makes sense. I think, I agree with Marie, that we should still keep our commitment to put the documents there. I absolutely believe that that's a commitment we made, but I personally do not believe that commitment precludes other possibilities.
Mr. Chavo, I completely agree with you. I completely agree with you.
Okay.
It doesn't preclude other possibilities after the storage has been put in there. We don't even know how much storage we're going to need. If the police and the fire and everyone brings their storage over there, is it going to be enough room with the way it is now? We don't know.
Well, I would say to that, and I appreciate that, my response to that would be, why put the cat before the horse?
Exactly.
You know what I'm saying? So I would say, you know, we haven't arrived at a point where we're in shot supply for space, and if we were, let's say hypothetically, I understand there are 6,600 square feet at the Ole Miss School, I don't know how much of net-net, you know, some of that's corridors and bathrooms, I get that, but so say there's roughly 6,000 square feet, if we're approaching 58 plus, 100 square feet, we can see that we're gonna need 6,000? Priority. Priority, that was the commitment. But if we only get to 4,000 square feet, why should we throw them out in the meantime when we don't know whether we're ever gonna make 4,000?
No one ever said they had to be out in the meantime. My comment was, no, no, my comment was, until we know how much room we had. You were in that building, nobody, did I go in that building and say, "Get out of here"?
I believe you sent us a letter.
I didn't send any letter to anyone.
Hey, I believe you had, I believe you had Dave send us a letter.
Yeah. Well, you could talk up here, I'm sorry. That's just my comment, so.
Adam Perry, 397 Robinson Street. Marie, I believe you had Dave, once Randy Buckner was no longer with us, I believe you had Dave send us a letter that said that we would have to be out on a certain date, and I believe that's how this whole ball got rolling.
Okay. I remember coming in here and being told, after the comment I made about finding animal poop in another room, finding cat cages in a hall, a closet that's not part of where the space was, being filled with things, and I said, "I thought that we're using a room. They're now expanding." It's, Linda, don't say no. It most assuredly was.
That closet is attached to our space, yeah, we store a couple of things in there. As far as the dog poop in there, that was an animal control issue, where we were out at 11 o'clock at night with no cruiser, because the cruiser was down, and I'm riding in the back of Linda's car, holding a dog to bring it to North School, because Lakeville is closed. So, we brought the dog over there, put him in a crate, and somehow throughout the night, he broke out of the crate, but broke through the door, pooped on the other side of the building where we don't even go, and we don't even, we wouldn't even need to check over there.
How come you never cleaned it for three weeks?
We didn't even know it was there, it was the other side of the building where we don't even go, the dog somehow got through, and then in the morning, he was back where, in the room that we were in. So, it's one time we screw up. One time. I think I've done a pretty good job. I've been doing animal control as the animal control officer for a few years.
And I have no question as to the job that you do, I have no question as to the job that Linda does. My thought process was, this is what I said I was going to do, until the storage was complete.
Right, and that was a plan, you said. Plans don't always go according to plan.
Maybe they don't.
I run a business too, and I don't always...
In my world, this was something that I made a promise to, in my world, my legislators, this is what I told them I was going to do.
Right, and it's just one room, that's all we ask for.
This to me is a professional building, I don't see that this is an operation that belongs in a professional building. My opinion at this time is, I would like to see how much storage we are going to use.
So can we get another...
When we are all done with how much storage we are going to use, then, any town department can offer up a bid for whatever use is left. There are three rooms upstairs, that, I mean, I don't, you can't get up there, because you have to use the stairs, so it's not handicapped accessible, which is a problem. There is no running water in the building, and there is no bathroom facility in the building. Right at this point in time, the building is not habitable, and that was my point of the whole thing.
Right, we're in there for two hours, we don't need any facilities, anything like that.
Yeah, okay.
And, yep, right, the water and toilet should be working fine.
Well, I still stand by what I said, once the building is completely filled with whatever we have for storage...
But once again, this was given to a department who, I work closely with NOAA, we, they knew Noah was going up there.
And NOAA is a nonprofit working under the guise of the town of Rainham?
What's that?
NOAA is a nonprofit working under the guise of the town of Rainham?
No, we're working closely, we work closely with NOAA.
No, 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 don't play on words with me. Is NOAA a nonprofit working under the guise of the town of Rainham? Is she a nonprofit, or is she doing this for the town of Rainham?
It sounds like both.
She is, yeah, so she was helping us the whole time. So she, we always, before me, the past two animal control officers have used NOAA to bring our animals to, because we have nowhere to bring the animals to. We don't have a shelter, we don't have a holding facility, we have nowhere to bring our animals to. And when I came in, NOAA was there for us, and we were always told to use NOAA, because she's awesome.
But NOAA was her own little business outside of the town.
What do you call it, a business?
It is a business.
How do you call a nonprofit a business?
Right.
Nonprofit is a business, ma'am.
No, it's not.
She makes no money from it.
Yeah, no.
And if she makes even a penny more, it goes back to an animal that is in need, but it's very rare that she makes anything from it, and I just, she has her numbers. But, let me see, what is this?
I just did something quick as far as medical bills and what it costs us for our recat, our kitten that we do, and for a female, just doing basics is $247.13, and for a male, it's $188.12. So the average cost for medical is $217.58, if you split it male and female, if you add them together and split it in two. This year, we've had a lot more females than we have males, so our costs are higher. Our adoption fee's $225, it can't be any higher than that, or we would, you know, we wouldn't do any adoptions. I mean, it is what it is, that's what the market will bear, and that's what we have to deal with. That doesn't include food, doesn't include litter, it doesn't include any cat or kitten that's sick, that needs medication, and this is with us doing a lot of the things ourselves to cut down on the cost. And the one thing, I really wanna go back to the dog poop. The night we picked up that dog, it was raining, the dog was locked in between two doors at McDonald's, it was a husky. Adam and I were out there searching for people to find out where this dog was, and he couldn't go, because of what Adam had in his truck and the cap, it couldn't go in Adam's truck. So, we're looking at each other, and we're like, the only option we have is to put this dog in the back of my SUV. I was horrified, absolutely horrified. So, he gets in the back, he holds the dog, and we drive to the North School. There's no way we could take that dog to Lakeville, in the back of my car. I mean, that's something that we should, somebody should say, gee, good job, guys, you went above and beyond, you got this dog out of harm's way. And, you know, instead of, oh, there was dog poop in a corner. Well, I'm sorry, I mean, I looked to make sure I didn't see anything, but it was there, and this husky broke out of a cage. He actually pushed the cage open, and he got out, and when I opened the door to go take him out for a walk at 6 o'clock the next morning, he greeted me at the door. So, I mean, that was an animal control issue, that was not a NOAA issue, that was above and beyond what I had to do. I didn't have to put that dog in my car. You know, I just, I didn't, and, you know, but Adam and I do a lot, we do a lot. There's no place for cats in this town. I take every cat, whether it's sick or healthy, I nurse it back to health. I mean, we've picked up cats that Adam will bring over or I'll grab, and, you know, they get subQ fluids, they get antibiotics, they get IMeds, they get syringe-fed, they get good vet care, they get whatever they need. NOAA takes care of that, the town doesn't take care of that. If I'm taking care of a cat that we picked up on the side of the road at 3 o'clock in the morning because it needs fluids or to be fed, I'm doing that on my own. That's, it's got nothing to do, because the town has no place for these animals, and the only choice is to put them to sleep. And unless we can, you know, if the cat is that sick, that's one thing, but for most of the time, we can nurse them back together between myself and a lot of my wonderful volunteers that are very, very skilled at what they do.
Tracy Rockmeyer, 25 Village Road. I just, do you guys have an idea of what the percentage is right now, as far as what you guys have for storage over there? Because I'm just thinking, why bring this up right now anyway? If, last time I was there, from what I understood, and, you know, Pacico could tell you that, you know, that he's even told me that it wasn't really a lot at the time, about a year ago, so, I'm not really sure what the percentage is right now, but I just don't understand why this needs to be done right this minute and take her out. And my second thing is to just say, where are you gonna put these cats if you kick her out of there? I mean, the amount of money that it's gonna cost for the town, even as much as nobody wants to see these cats euthanized, it's gonna cost a lot of money for the town to have these cats euthanized. You're saving a lot of money by having her there.
Well, first off, I can't tell you, and this is the reason, I can't tell you how much storage is going to be needed. We are hiring a company that is coming in, they're gonna catalog, crate, put up shelves, and put in the storage. That is why I say, when the storage is complete, then you will know how much room is left in the building.
So why kick her out now? Why not bring this up when you figure that out?
Yes.
Well, if I can say that I do believe I was outvoted at the, well, it wasn't even a vote, it was after a meeting, that it was a discussion, that they stay here, stay there until we found out how much storage we had.
Okay. But from what I understand from tonight, you've already given her notice that...
Well, I wasn't even aware the letter was written for 30 days.
Okay. I'm just saying, I just think that this is all very silly at the moment, until you know how much storage you need.
Well, it truly is, because you all are doing a wonderful, wonderful job, and it's a most appreciated, thankless job. The kittens aren't gonna say, "Thank you," well, they will in their own little way, but they're not gonna come right out and say, "Thank you" to you, and it's a wonderful thing that you all do. But you have to understand too, that the way people like me feel, you say something to a town body, this is what you're going to do, you wanna follow through with what you're going to do. The North School Committee knew, once that storage part was finished, the North School was dissolved, it was all done. It had done its job. It put in a heating system, it took out underground tanks, it put in a new boiler system, it's working on painting, it's working on putting in a bathroom, and it's working on, what else are they doing on the bathroom? Oh, the water, we haven't got water down there, so we're putting in, you know, have to put in water. So when all of this is done, you'll know how much space is left. If there's a room space, then they can come to the Board of Selectmen and request that be for the animal officer, as a town department, if the town department is going to use it.
I understand what you're saying, I just don't think that there's any point in doing this right now. That's all I'm saying. I don't understand why it can't be put off for a while, until you get to that point, where you know how much you're gonna need.
Well, I think I just said that.
David Donnie, 198 Home Street East. I am on the North School Committee, and I was at the meeting where the dog poop was found and stuff. When we found the dog.
Right, right, that was it.
And I have the minutes from that meeting?
Yeah.
And I just wanted to clarify one thing. It says, Mrs. Smith commented about the cat adoption program NOAA at the school. She stated that she felt as soon as construction is started, that NOAA should find another location to hold its adoptions.
Right.
So is that next week, if they start choosing the floor to put paint down, do we move them out then? Or do we wait until there's storage? That's the whole problem, is people think that they're gonna be thrown out next week, in two weeks, that's what they think.
David, you, on the committee, know what trouble we have been having getting construction going in that building.
That's correct.
We have gotten bids out for three different contractors, and we are waiting, waiting, and waiting. When I say when construction is started, obvious, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify it at that time.
See, that's why I think a lot of the problem is, that people think that this could be next week. Is that correct?
No, it can't be next week. No.
That's what people think, that's the whole situation. People think next week, if construction starts, you guys are gonna be out, correct? Who thinks they're gonna be out next week?
Yep.
That's the whole problem. These people think that you're gonna have feral cats running around, because we have no way to put them. I mean, I don't see the North School being anywhere near complete for six, eight months, would you say?
I truthfully couldn't tell you, because I don't know how fast they're getting in there.
But this stems from the whole situation, is those comments, what people heard, think that they're getting thrown out next week, correct?
Right.
Right. I mean, what's that? As of June 30th, they're gonna be thrown out. But being on the committee, I mean, Makka Kattapain's doing painting, it was an awful spring, he's what, three months out now to get the painting done?
I have not spoken to any of the contractors, that's...
No, I'm just, I speak with Jeff Keller, and he had told me that Makka Kattapain, they had, you know, in the springtime, there was so much rain, he's backed up. The floor's supposed to, on the other side's supposed to be dug up, it's supposed to be, you know, painted and sealed, and that's gonna take time too. But the whole situation is, everybody thought they had to be out by, what, June 30th, was it? And they think they're there on a shoestring, that all of a sudden, you're gonna get a let out, the door's gonna be locked, and, you know, no more cat, is that correct?
Right.
Who wants to see that? I mean, I think you guys do great work, I've been there. I mean, I walk in there, everything's at a 90-degree angle, you could eat off the floor that's there, and that one time I was there, I'm like, I mean, stuff's rearranged, I'm like, what the hell happened to you? I mean, I didn't have an answer for it, and then come to find out, the dog got loose, and Adam saved it, and he did a great job for the town. But I think if people just knew that they're safe there for six months, they're gonna breathe easy, is that correct?
Then we'll get plenty of notice.
Okay, but I mean, they thought they had to be out by June 30th, that's...
Well, I'm sorry if you thought that.
That's where a lot of this came from, is...
Well, we've got a lot of miscommunication here also.
It's a big miscommunication, I think that, you know, if we all met once a month, just to update them on it, as to what we're doing with it, I think that'd be great. Or just, you know, somewhere, now that you're on the board, I don't see you guys, you know, I see you there for a while, the way North School going. That's like, you know, molasses on a cold day.[554.91][554.91](LAUGHING) No, it is. I'm just, I'm just being honest. But people think they're going to be thrown out tomorrow, and I just don't think that's what Marie meant to say. I just think it's getting a bit blown out of proportion with this, and people are angry about the cats, because we have a lot of people in town that love animals. I love animals, you love animals, and, I mean, I see cats around today. I mean, Karen and I rescue animals, and we take them to shelters and stuff, and I'm sure anybody in this building right now will do that too. But I think if they just know that they're safe there for, let's say, the next, you know, three or four months. I mean, I love to see a shelter in town. I mean, how does Lakeville have a dog shelter, and we don't? They're a smaller town. But yet, how much do we pay, was it $15 a day? I mean, I know, I, I see Adam, I had a cat hit in front of my house one night, and Adam's over there at 10 o'clock picking it up. I'm like... But I think we all can, you know, group together to make this happen and work for all, everybody that's here. I mean, I do think it was blown out of proportion. I think people thought it was going to be this day, and people thought this. I just think people got scared of the good organization we have.
Yeah, but I don't think that we're... Adam Perry again. I don't think we're just concerned about these first few months. As far as I was concerned, when I was given permission for the building, I was given permission permanently. So, we thought we had a place. We painted the whole place, we scraped the floor, painted the walls, painted the ceiling. We weren't just looking for a temporary place. We thought we had a place. We don't have a shelter, we don't have anything in town. We asked for one room, and now, I don't want to see gone away in six months, you know? What's the point in going away in six months? It doesn't make any sense.
Adam, may I ask, please, who told you that originally?
I was given permission through Randy. So, Randy supposedly went to you guys.
You were given permission to use, to use the room?
Yes.
Not permanently?
I was told permanently. And then I asked if I could, we could paint the room, and he came back and said we could paint the room and clean it up however we wanted. It was never, never one question of temporary or permanent. It was always permanent.
Well, I was never told that it was a permanent situation. In fact, the committee didn't even know that you were going in there.
That's correct. I did until I went there.
When I went to one of the meetings, because I did not go to these meetings until as of late. I've only gone to three meetings.
Yep.
And when I did go, they asked me, did I approve this? And I said, what are you talking about? And then they walked me into the room to show me, and I said, what is this? And they told me what it was, and I said, I have no idea how they're here.
So, is this something we can change? Is this something we can vote on to get it permanent? I mean, we want, animal control needs a place. Animal control needs a location.
Adam, I am so sympathetic to your cause.
Then help us out. Find it.
I am sympathetic, but not stupid. I still stand with what I said. When the storage is there, you can stay there until the storage is ready to go in.
So, maybe, so maybe we should help, maybe make North School Committee kind of help another department and say, where can animal control go? I mean, we need a place.
Well, animal control should, should be, animal control should be looking to get a place of its own for the town of Rainham. There is land available, town land that's available. What you have to do is go to the Capital Planning Committee with a set of plans, an idea, a cost, and go from there. And then petition the town meeting to give you the money to put up an animal shelter.
Yeah, but why would we want to do that when we have a perfectly good building that's not even being used?
I'm talking about an animal shelter, which you would put dogs and cats in.
Animal shelter requires a lot of cost, which is a great idea, but it's a ton of costs.
Well, you're talking about a small town. This isn't so small anymore.
Mm-hmm, it's not.
It's not so small anymore. I mean, the police chief told me a few weeks ago that he had like four dog bites in two, two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's not a small town anymore. We probably need our own animal shelter.
Yep.
And as an animal officer, that should be the, the goal that you have, is to have your own shelter. And not be, you know, obliged to Lakeville or any other place.
Right, and I have, we have limited funding, my huge budget of $7,000.
That's right. That's right. Hey, listen, that's a lot of money.
Including cell phone and repairing the SUV and our budget.
Can you ask where the budget for that would come from?
That's a lot of money. That's like...
Just a reminder again, everybody, mic keeps knocking. If you want to talk, you better go up there, please.
So, the budget for that, I was told, would be around $600,000 to $800,000 a year to fund that.
For what?
For a dog shelter.
That is ridiculous.
The animal control officer gets $87,000 in Taunton, just for that.
That's taunton. That's not ridiculous.
Right, but then there's three other people, there's three other people that are on that.
Not many people in the town are going to get that kind of money. I'm done. I think you've heard enough from this one and all the rest of them too.
I'm going to bring another side of the ECO perspective into this. So, I come from a town where I was an ECO that has a population lower than your town. We have three animal control officers, one department head who is salaried at full-time, two part-times, make $21 an hour. So, even at part-time, it's a pretty big budget for salary. The animal control officers don't run the shelter. They do the shelter management, but it's not their job to clean the kennels and do the cleaning and all of the maintenance. That falls on four kennel manage, or four kennel workers. So, that's another budget for four part-time employees. Then you have to have a building to put it in, which my town I came from just happened to get one approved for, I think it's just shy of a million dollars for a new animal shelter. And that's paid for half by a nonprofit Friends of the Town organization, but the town had to put up the other half of the money because the shelter they have is falling apart. So, it just doesn't seem reasonable to me to spend six to eight, or almost a million dollars on a shelter when you have a temporary but almost permanent solution, if Noah is willing to continue to do work for the town, and Lakeville is willing to continue to hold dogs for you. I mean, we're talking about a miniscule amount of money for them to be in the North School, and almost a million dollars to build a new shelter. And then in the meantime, what is your proposed plan for them to work out of? I've never met an ECO that doesn't have an office. And I'm like, I'm mad for you guys, because where do you put your state paperwork?
In the, in the broken guy's room.
Like, that's not, that's not secure. Your paperwork should be part of that storage at this point. I just, I can't under, I just give you guys credit for operating in the way that you do, because I cannot imagine. I mean, we, I had, we had an office with two computers and an ECO vehicle that functioned properly. I've never had to put a dog in my car. I've never had to worry about where I was going to house a cat. And we do, we do almost 200 cats a year, just like you guys, so we have our own shelter. So, I just give credit to you guys, and I hope that the town looks at those numbers and says that maybe might not be the best decision right now, and just to keep them at the North School, because that just doesn't, fiscally doesn't make sense to me. And I hope that if you come to an agreement where you can stay in the school until the storage moves in, which is what your agreement was originally, I hope that you start thinking now, not at that time, what you're going to do for them in the meantime, because they can't have nowhere to go. You'll have no functioning animal control officers. Even a home base in the police station or in the fire station, an office to function out of in a small holding area for animals would be better than leaving them with nothing. And I don't, yeah. I don't even know where you got your equipment.
Karen.
Adam, what was on the floor that you had to scrape up? I'm serious. You said you scraped the floor. What was it? Was it tile?
Oh, that was the, it was paint that was bubbled on the floor.
Okay. Just curious as to what it was.
Yep.
And you disposed of it properly, I'm sure.
Oh, cool.
Really quickly, my name is Mary Beth Pettit. I live at 49 Merrill Lewis Court in Rainham, and I'm a lifelong resident. This is my daughter Sarah. She's a freshman at BR, and she volunteers for Noah. We were watching you on TV, and when the tears started rolling, I said, we're going to go have a civics lesson right now and go down and speak our minds. Mrs. Smith, I completely understand that you don't want to go back on your word. We all get that. None of us do. You said you wanted to use it for storage, and that was your, you know, the commitment you made to your group. However, good leaders know when their decisions need to be changed. Right now, with Noah, you have a perfect fit for this town. The storage is not at its capacity. I could see if we were at capacity, then absolutely, we'd have to find another space for Noah. But right now, it's not. And a good leader knows when it's time to say, maybe I didn't make the right decision. Maybe it's not the best decision for the town of Rainham. So, I would just ask you to consider that. Thank you.
She loves you, and she loves your cats, and she loves what you do.
And we need Noah.
I think what we had here was a complete lack of communication. I'm on the committee to save North Rainham, and every word that Mrs. Smith said is true. Our intention in saving the school was to store the permanent records of the town, which are just taken over this building. There's no room for them. And it's true of fire and police and other departments. There are certain records that you can never destroy in a town. And this is what our intention was for North School. And I agree with Mrs. Smith. I think you people do a wonderful job. It's thankless, it's selfless. I have two things to say. Number one, I have known Mrs. Smith for 45 years. And in that entire time, she has devoted hundreds of hours, volunteer time, to this town. Nobody knows the town better than Mrs. Smith, except possibly Mrs. Lounsbury and Dawn McKinnon, and Betty Thompson, probably. And everything she has done is for the welfare of the town. She's as passionate about this town as you are about the animals. And I think that instead of sending out notices on Facebook and all that baloney, we should be applauding this lady. That's all I have to say.
A third time's the charm. First of all, I was on the board at the time the decision was made whether or not to destroy the old North School or to save it. I was on the board then, and I'm going to tell you, that decision was made without any consideration for storing books. We did not make that decision to store books. We made the decision to save the old North School because it was a historical piece of the community. We, we, we looked for ways to justify that after we made that decision. And one of the things that we came up with, in order to justify, in order to use the building that we decided had historical value, because there were people that wanted to tear that building down. Some of you may be aware of that, I certainly am. So, we, we struggled to come up with a reasonable way to utilize that building. And we said, all right, storage of materials, that's going to give us some rationale, some, some intellectualization for, for saving the building. Now, I'm going to come back and say one thing last time. I don't see any reason, and I heard Dave's comments, and I thought they were very good. I see no reason for us to leave this room and say, hey, we got three months until we figure this out, or four months. That's a permanent place until the board decides otherwise. That's the way I feel. And I'm going to tell you something, if we don't have that place for the use of the animal control department, this town is in deep, deep trouble. They have nothing else. I was part of the decision that got him the ECO vehicle. It's a piece of junk, and that's the best we could get. It's a piece of junk, and that's what I fought to get. So, I'm going to tell you right now, this town better stand behind this effort, because if they don't, they are really making a big, big mistake going forward. It's a strategic mistake. A mistake that has a lot, a lot of ramifications. I don't even know why these people do all the work they do for this miserable $7,000 a year. I really, truly don't get it. I would, I, I don't, you're angels. Well, not, not Adam, but you are.
Hello, my name is Nanette Ryan. I live on 2 Carina Drive in Taunton. I am not affiliated with Rainham, and I'm, actually don't even consider myself a Taunton townie. I'm a town employee of West Bridgewater. And I'm just curious as to why, if there is such an issue with storage of documents. Now, the woman over here had just said that some documents can't be destroyed, they have to remain permanent. Are there documents in the town of Rainham that get scanned and get put into the iCloud? I find it, I'm fascinated that in 2017, the fire department, police department with all the modern computers would be creating so many documents, even town hall in West Bridgewater, you can pay online, you can pay water bills. So, I'm just curious as to if the concern, because it's not going to get better, it would get worse. If you actually paid somebody to crate documents. If I lived in the town of Rainham, I'd be concerned about crated documents in a building that doesn't have run in water, and I'd be wondering where the local fire hydrant is to put out the fire, and why documents aren't being scanned and handled in a different way. There are so many other ways that documents can be stored permanently. So, I'm, I'm fascinated with this, that you're filling up an old school building, a historical building, with paper.
Some of these, this paper is what we already have.
Mm-hmm.
And what we already, I'm told by the state that we must keep as permanent records.
But when they say must keep, it can't be scanned. It costs $100 for a scanner. We scan everything at the West Bridgewater Public Library. We, we're not, we don't keep records that are older than 10 years. We don't keep financial documents that are older than 10 years. Even the town hall had to clean up and get rid of, you know, certain documents, and we, $100 scanners. I mean, there are other ways to do it.
There probably are several ways to do it, in which case, there is a company that we hired that will be giving us the information, is what we can do with certain records. But other records that we do have, we can't scan.
Okay, so the company was, that the company was hired for that purpose to, to say, this can go, this can...
Exactly.
Okay, so, so ideally, you wouldn't be filling up the building with paperwork, then?
We'll be filling up the building with whatever storage has to be, from what we have, whatever is left that has to be stored. How much room that's going to take, we do not know. We have an office downstairs. You know what it's used for? Storage. It's got boxes piled high with it. We don't know if a lot of that stuff has to be kept or doesn't have to be kept. Once we find all that out, that's why this is just so crazy. Once we find out what we need, what space is left, goes right back to here, because the committee is done.
Okay.
And you said something about water.
That is a fear, I said.
That's the point I'm taking. We are putting water in the building. We are putting a sanitary in the building. This is the construction that's going to be going on. And believe me, it's taking far too long to suit me that it's going on.
I'm sure. I get that, because I see...
And that's why I am so frustrated.
I, I don't blame you, but in, in the meantime, I mean...
In the meantime, we're staying where it is until then space is full with what it was intended.
And the fact that, that there is no animal control, that, that, that's, I mean, and it's super expensive. It sounds like there are other issues.
No one in the town of Rainham has gone through the exercise of finding out just how expensive it is. A kennel is a kennel is a kennel. A kennel can be an old building somewhere. If there were an old building outside of North School, that it could be used.
When does that company start, come into crate? When does that happen? What, the company that's coming into crate and go through the documents?
They have been notified that they're the ones that are going to do it. And as soon as the town clerk makes arrangements with them, they will come in, catalog what we have, know how many boxes it's going to take, and we're often, you know, soon as the building is ready, they're often ready to do it.
Okay, thank you. You answered my question.
David Donnie again, 198 Elm Street East. Says, Marie knows we, with King Information Systems, they're going to tell us what can be stored electronically, what can be stored hard copy, you know, what can be stored in the cloud or whatnot. But until they do their job, we don't know. Is that correct?
And Marsha, you would probably be able to answer that.
Yeah, we don't know 100% what needs to be done, and Marie is just, you know, she's looking at the big picture.
Well, I have to look at the big picture.
I know that, that's why.
I can't, I can't do for today. I have to do for next year, the year after, and the year after that.
Right, but until you meet with King Information, if you've got, you know, 6,000 boxes that can all be scanned on a cloud, boom, it's gone. But yet, if you have 6,000 boxes that have to be stored hard copy, that's a different story. Once we start to work with them, we're going to get a relationship going, so that when we start storing documents, some could be on the cloud, some could be on microfiche, and some can also be, you know, hard copy that are needed.
Then if they don't do microfiche anymore?
Well, you know what I'm saying. I'm not a... Remember the first time I met you, Marie?
No, I don't.
The first time I met you was at the old dump on a rainy day.
Oh, where, when?
Probably 1993, you were out there petitioning. I'm like, holy cow, look at this lady. I'm going to vote for her, and I vote for you every time since.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I mean, it's smelly, and I see this lady, and I'm like, I play baseball with your kids. I'm like, I know you were. And she was running for office. I'm like, any lady that can sit at the old dump on a rainy day gets my vote.
I rest my vote.
Thank you.
And then, when I was walking in to vote that day, I said something to you. I said, anybody that can stand at the dump, I'm going to vote for. And I vote for you every time since. Because I know you represent Rainham, and you love the people in this town. And I just think this whole cat thing is getting way blown out of proportion. I mean...
It has, it has. I think a lot of emotion has gotten into it.
It has. It has, it's, I mean, the stuff on Facebook and stuff, it's just way out of control, it's...
I don't go on Facebook.
No, but I'm just saying, I mean, we're all here for a common, we're all here for a common purpose. We're on the same team, I mean, the fact that we have nowhere to put a cat or a dog, and how many people in this town, 13, 14,000?
14,000.
That's incredible. I mean, why can't Adam have an office here? Is there a space open for him?
Well, maybe if the space opened up in the office downstairs, he could...
I don't know, I mean, I mean, we have an animal control officer, I walk by his house every morning, we go for a walk, I look at that truck, I'm like, is it going to the shop today? Will it even stop? But I'm like, I think Rainham has gone, you remember Rainham was dirt roads and stuff, now it's up to here. We need to bring it to the level where if a dog gets hit, or a dog gets hurt, or a dog's lost, I mean, I've called Adam many times about dogs. And I mean, we've rescued dogs, and he keeps them at his house, correct? He holds dogs at his house for a certain period of time.
I think that's, I think that's the nature of the animal officer.
The town of Rainham, because you've got good people.
The last one used to carry him around in his truck, too.
I mean, but if, but if someone's dog gets...
No, I'm talking about the last animal officer before you. That's what he did. If he didn't find room for a dog in a kennel, he carried him around in his truck with him and took him home at night.
But if a dog gets lost on a Friday, you know...
I'm not saying that's the right thing to do, Adam.
But if a dog gets lost on a Friday, and it goes to Lakeville, aren't they closed over the weekend?
Yeah, we can bring them in.
Oh, you can, but, but those people can't get their dog back till Monday?
Right.
I mean, to me, I mean, the dogs are locked in, there was no one working there?
There's somebody there.
There's someone there, but they don't release them. To me, I think we should have someplace that's, you know...
Well, all right.
But I mean, how...
If I have an office downstairs, I can keep them cats in there.
Thank you.
I'm Elaine Cutner, I live at 55 Westlake Drive in Taunton. I've been involved with NOAA for probably 16 years, and I just want to, I'm a little concerned, I think we're mixing toothfancy. We're mixing the dog officer and the need for space for dogs with what we're here for, which is a space just for, to do our adoptions for cats. Everybody here, most everybody here are volunteers, like, we are a whole night long feeding babies, baby kittens. Because I'm a nurse, I take babies home from the vet with IVs in, because I know how to take care of them. Everybody here has a special talent. And our concern, even though they have a concern that's legitimate, NOAA's concern is adopting out kittens, having a space to do that. This young lady back here, who has been working with us, and she's crying, she's so upset about everything. We need to teach our children that animals have a place in this world, and we need to treat them with kindness. You read any book on psychology, in child psychology, they will tell you how important it is for children to have that. So, you know, and all of us volunteers pay a lot of money for what we do. We buy cat food when we can't get it right away. We all buy our own litter, which is expensive. We make trips to the vet, and you know the price of gas. So, and we're using our houses, our furniture gets ruined, our rugs get ruined, and we do it because we love it. And that's really what I want you people to take away with you tonight. That, to me, is a separate issue, the whole dog issue. We, as the volunteers from NOAA, are concerned about just having a space, and it's been wonderful the last couple of years, to have that space to do the adoptions. We have the people come in with their young children, and they're picking out their kitten, and it's just the most wonderful thing. We've never had such a wonderful space in all the years we've done this. We've done it in the pet stores, and the facilities have not been as wonderful and homey as where we are. The kids can sit on the rugs, they can play with the kittens. It's just, you need to come down and watch it go on, because it's wonderful. And everybody walks out of there thanking us and hugging us because they have a kitten.
Unless we turn them down.
Unless we turn them down. And once in a while, we do, we're very, very careful. When I take care of kittens, I have seven in my house right now, and I had to de-flea my whole house, because a couple of kittens came in with fleas, and they weren't caught in time. So, you know, there's $50 I've spent in all of my day just taking care of that little issue. You know, they're my kittens. And I want to make sure when my kittens go into a home, they go into a home that is going to love them, nurture them, and take good care of them. And if they're not, we say, no, sorry, you cannot adopt one of our kittens. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Joe, do you have anything you want to say? This is probably the longest I've been quiet, so... It was a struggle for me. I want to thank all of you first for coming in. In my 11 years on the board, I don't know that we've ever had such an audience as we have tonight, and I think it's obvious that all of you are very caring and passionate about animals. And I want to say a few things. This issue has gotten a lot larger than when I ever anticipated it, and in my opinion, it shouldn't be a referendum on Mrs. Smith. As elected officials, we all have our opinions, and we don't have to agree with them. On this issue, Mrs. Smith and I are on different sides. But Mrs. Smith is still my colleague, and I respect her, and she has her right to her opinion. But I think what we should be focusing on right now is Rainham and the community that we are. I'm looking at a high school freshman back there crying, and this is probably her first experience with town government, and this is how she's having to receive us. That's awful. Town government is here to do good. Town government is where all the good stuff is supposed to happen. Town government is where you're supposed to be proactive and not just reactive, like most government is. Town government should be doing those good things that make you a community. And that's what Rainham's always done. I'm fourth generation in this town. My great-grandfather's Rainham's first cop, my grandfather's Rainham's first park and rep commissioner, my town, my family goes back in this town well over 100 years. And I stayed in this town because I love this town, because I love the people in this town. And all of you here are showing you, showing us what Rainham is about. There should be no question that these cats have a place to stay. Now, one thing that we've done since I've been on this board is to tell every single department, including ACO, to live within your budget. Because when the times were tough, like every other community, we weren't laying people off because of that sound financial management. Now, personally, me, I don't support spending a million dollars in animal shelter, especially when we have one room now that is free to the taxpayers. The Rainham bond rating just got increased because of our sound financial planning. And part of the conference call that I was on was that there was no plans for any massive expansion anywhere. If we're talking a million-dollar project, we're going to get downgraded. And when we get downgraded on our bond rating, your taxes go up, my taxes go up. And so, there's a larger picture to all of this here. And part of it is, we have a room that is not being used for anything else right now, that is well-kept, and I personally just don't understand why the cats cannot be there. It's a little confusing to me, and I never tried to micromanage as an executive here in Rainham, but I got calls, Linda called me crying, wanted to know what was going on. I didn't have a good answer for her, I'm not entirely sure where this went off the tracks or why it happened. When the North School Committee started, and I'll admit it, I was not in support of keeping the North School Committee, and Masha's going to laugh back there, but I don't believe the town of Rainham should be in the business of holding real estate. I lost that vote, that's fine, I've lost some votes before, Dick's laughing, he knows. And so, when an opportunity presented itself to use that building when it wasn't being used, because it was a good two years when there was absolutely nothing going on, except being used as target practice, I took it. I said, sure, why not? Why can't these cats go there for one day a week? It made sense to me. It was literally sitting there as an eyesore to that neighborhood, and as a target practice site for whoever wanted to shoot at it. So, we put somebody in there who's adopting cats and doing good for the town. I still see nothing wrong with that. Now, when the North School Committee started doing the planning, my understanding was a survey went out to all department heads, asking if they would utilize it for storage, and my understanding is police and fire said, no, we're not going to move our stuff there. And that's why the comments I made to the newspaper were, I don't believe there's enough storage in town to fill that building. Because if you take out our two largest departments, that would mean this entire building was covered top to bottom in storage, to take up all of that space at the North School. And so, if or when we got to the point that the North School needed full occupancy for storage, then I think it's our obligation as a board to find a different place for NOAA. But I don't believe we're at that point, and I don't know that we will ever be at that point. More and more, the Commonwealth is allowing municipalities to go electronic, as the lady from West Bridgewater talked about. We should be doing that. Unfortunately, there's some aspects of this great town that we're a little bit behind the eight ball on, believe it or not. You know, and we're trying to address that, too, but the bottom line is, we have some great volunteers led by Linda, who are doing such a good thing at no cost to the taxpayer. No cost to the taxpayer. And I can guarantee you, if that went on any town meeting, vote would pass. Guarantee it. And so, what I'm trying to figure out is how we can move forward with this, how we can honor Mrs. Smith's commitment to town meeting and let storage go there, but also let NOAA and animal control peacefully coexist. And whether that's you guys on the second floor or the first floor, I'm not entirely sure, but I know Linda and Adam, you guys are flexible at where you're going to be located, you just want a home. Yeah. So, my opinion is, to my colleagues, is we make a commitment tonight to keep NOAA there, unless every single square foot of that building is needed for storage, and if and when we get to that point, then it's our obligation as a selectman to find an alternate site for them, and not put it on them to find one. That's our obligation. And in the future, I hope you come back, and I hope we don't make you cry again.
She's a poor mom.
No, she, it takes a lot of courage to come to a meeting like this and to stand strong for your principles, and you should be commended for that, you really should. And we, we don't always get to do, yeah...
Thank you for listening, Mrs. Smith. Okay, I know you've had the front... All the comments tonight, and I appreciate you listening, and again, I hope you would reconsider, and I think what Mr. Patiko had to say kind of makes perfect sense for our town right now. And when it's maxed out, we have to find a new home for NOAA, but till then, I think we should let NOAA stay. Is that something that you would be willing to unreach, Mrs. Smith?
I believe I said that earlier.
I think it was pretty clear, though. Now that we have it, now that it's still clear that we have it, I'll...
They want you to come up.
We can take a microphone. I guess now that Mr. Patiko's kind of put a nice little takeaway and wrapped it up in a little present for us, would you be willing to kind of go along with what Mr. Patiko said and let NOAA stay until that building's at max capacity for storage?
Well, would we take a vote?
Is that something you can do tonight, so we can all hear it? Great, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for coming down and supporting the town. Like Marie and Joe are on opposite sides of an issue, it's nice to see that still the community can come down, everybody can speak their mind very respectfully, and get everybody's points across, and that means a lot to everybody in the town. That being said, I think it's a wonderful thing, what you are doing for NOAA. That's just an amazing group. Like everybody said, it's nonprofit, you're not making any money, you're saving hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cats, turning into more kittens, turning into, who knows what it would cost in the future with coyotes and this and that? You don't even know what you're up against, and you're doing it all voluntarily, and you're just doing an amazing job. I don't see any reason, as we were just talking, why you both can't coexist there. The storage, like we said, is still far away, and I think it's not going to be an issue, as Joe has said, the both departments, the biggest departments, aren't even considering storing stuff there. And the town is moving in the direction of electronic and paying bills that way and such, so we're not going to have the paper trails that we have at the moment. That being said, I would like to, with the board's permission, make a vote tonight that North School will stay for storage, and that the NOAA can stay in some capacity in the building, as far as we know, going forward for the unconditional future. And then, if for some reason, in five, 10 years, we find out we need more storage, and we'll readdress it at that point, but I don't think it would be an issue. How is the board with that?
I'd make a motion as such.
I don't, I can't, I can't make, I can't go along with the motion as stated, because you said at this time, permanently, unconditionally. I can't do that. I can say, with all sincerity, that until storage is neat, until the storage is in there, we don't know how much space we need. If we need the space, once the storage is there, then NOAA will have to find another spot.
If you want to do a friendly amendment, Mrs. Smith, I'll do it. I think that was what you were going for, Mrs. Robert.
Well, yes, I just didn't...
No, if you want to...
So I'll put that in as a motion.
And I would second that, then?
And I third, so it's approved.
You thirded?
I thirded.
I want to thank you all, really, this has been a very nice meeting. You know, we don't usually have people come, so it's exciting when there is a group that does come, whether you're on the same side of myself or not on the same side. I love you all for being part of the town of Rainham, because that's what I love, the town of Rainham. By all means!
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, I want to apologize.
You do, no apology necessary. No, it was not, it's how you felt. Like I said, I get very frustrated, and when I do, I'm apt to say anything.
I was out of order.
No, no, that's all right. Apology accepted.
Yes, so welcome. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Thank you, Mrs. Patiko, thank you.
I don't think anybody's going to hear us.
Just have projects. Why are you making that?
So, completion of old business, we have nothing? Nothing. Town administrator report. It's going to be quick.
Senior clerk's position for the town tax collector's office. We performed two interviews today, and we should have a decision by tomorrow. The activation plate, the handicapped accessible plate for the door going into town hall, vendor has been selected, and work will commence a week from Wednesday. Will then be reimbursed by the ADA through a grant. Capital planning committee is going to start, we have all the requests, we're going to be having meetings Wednesday and Thursday evening with all respective departments. North School, still waiting on the work, but the doors have been moving along. And through Jeff Kelleher, we should be getting some activity done on the other aspects, the other phases. Next selectman's meeting will be a week from tonight, September 12th, and the next department head meeting will be the 4th Thursday in September, the 22nd. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Joe, do you have anything? Mrs. Smith, nothing? I have nothing. Correspondents, we have a few things. We have a letter to confirm retirement for the position of maintenance, which would be effective September 30th. Please do not hesitate to call me if you have any, if you need any help from me with the transitioning process, I'll be more than happy to oblige. This is from John...
Cucinata.
Cucinata. I always say it wrong. Steph, who's the second, that's been approved. Then, we are pleased to inform you, I know that's very loud, Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid Funding for fiscal year 2018 will total $20 million statewide pending final legislation. They've been, sent that over to us for MassDOT for the contract. Then we have a license application for Coletti's for beer and wine. How does the board approve on that?
Send it here for two weeks. That would be the, what is it, 19?
Yep.
Does that work for you, Mrs. Smith?
Yep.
7 o'clock, Madam Chair?
Perfect, thank you so much. And, sorry, this is from Michael King, and this is for... This is from Michael King, and this is for us. Enclose a proposal investment from IPS for the town's other post-employment benefits trust fund has been recommended to the town adopt an IPS for its OPEB trust in order to please auditors and help with the town's bond rating. Boards, I must have gotten, so this is a good thing for us with the bond, and how does the board approve this?
It's OPEB. It's that, yeah, the alternate retirement. It's just formalizing the policies.
Right, right. Okay, I'll move to it.
Second.
That's been approved. I have several letters here, but I'm not going to read them. They are all in favor of the Noah cat adoption, so we kind of saw how that went already. And then the last thing I have is the annual appointments that we need to sign after the meeting.
And approved, Madam Chair.
And approved. Okay, they've been approved, and that is all I have. We have no press, and we have no emergency business. Any citizens want to say anything? No? Okay. I motion we adjourn and sign the bills.
Move to adjourn, pay the bills.
Thank you. Second, oh, yes, we're in executive session.